And then I have. Thank you, Ingrid. And then I have a quick PowerPoint that we can go through. Uh, let me just get it.
And just to clarify, we're calling to order but not going into executive session yet, correct?
That's correct. So we updated our agenda. And we're going to discuss the statement of interest for the applicants. Prior to considering the demographic information and then we'll consider the demographic information in executive session. So I just have a couple of quick slides to give folks a sense of what we're doing. And I think you all should be able to see my screen pretty soon, maybe now.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, so let me get back here. So here's our special meeting. Welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. Happy New Year. Um, so in our consideration of the applications today, um, I think, you know, both are kind of equally weighted. I think the statements of interest can stand on their own. And what we did in the application process this time was we indicated to applicants that their statements of interest would be made part of the public facing meeting materials that are retained online in perpetuity as part of the public record, or at least as long as our sort of records retention goes. We have guidelines on our website for when we need to take things down, but it's five years. But that we would keep the demographic information that they provided to us. So that is household income, gender identification, whether or not somebody identifies as having a disability. We would, we would not make those part of the public facing meeting materials. Um, we, we sort of use the caveat and said, you know, everything that is submitted to a state agency is available through a public records request. So if we do receive a public records request, there's a process that DOJ has um, where we would notify the applicants that a public records request has been submitted um, and that we are intending to share that information. And I think there may be kind of a process they can go through with DOJ. If there is something they really don't want to have made public facing and there are, you know, protocols. Um, but all of that was in the application. Um, and just a quick discussion before we move into any discussion of the demographics and to have this in a public venue. Um, when we are considering demographics, what we're doing as a committee is trying to help our C I A C reflect Oregon as a whole. We're not looking at the demographics so that we can consider the merits of any specific candidate. Um, we're really looking at how we can best get our committee in line with the demographics of Oregon overall. Um, and so through Title VI, um, we are not allowed to, and, and this is why we are considering the demographics sort of as a, as an entire, you know, as in, in their entirety versus assigning any kind of characteristics to a specific candidate. Um, is we cannot use race, color, national origin, religion, disability, sex, including pregnancy, sexual orientation, gender identification, age, or marital status as part of a decision making process. That is illegal. Um, and so that's why we don't do it. And that's why when we look at our demographics, um, what we, what Ingrid has put together for us, and you'll see this in executive session, is how our current C I A C members, um, sort of reflect the demographics of Oregon overall and how the addition of, um, you know, another applicant of one of the applicants for Congressional District Six would change our overall representation. And, and you know, whether or not some of that can move us in a direction of broadly representing the state of Oregon and the interests that we have here. So just to orient folks to the statute that we are trying to adhere to. So this is one nine seven one six oh, the statute that, or excuse me, um, the rule statute, statute. Sorry, that establishes the C I A C by law. And it specifically says the group should be broadly representative of geographic areas, which is why we have somebody from each congressional district and, um, and the state and wait, representative of geographic areas of the state and of interests relating to land use and land use decisions. Um, and so that's why, you know, we consider everybody to have an interest in land use. Um, and in doing so, we're trying to sort of center equity and racial justice in our work. Um, and that's why we do the demographics review. So I'm going to stop my share here and allow Ingrid to pull open our applicant information and then we can take a look at that together. Um, and then we will move into executive session after that. So it seems like some folks, this may be the first time, um, we're looking at this information. So I will just pause my jabber and give you a moment or two uh, to read through these. They're not long. As you know, we've made it a short and sweet application. So I will pause.
Would you like me to scroll or just, is that visible to everybody?
Yes, we can see it.
I think we're ready for a scroll, Ingrid, if you want to move down the application. Yeah, that looks good. Okay, I think this is the end of this application. Is everybody ready to move on to the next one? You see some nodding heads. Okay, go ahead, Ingrid. Thank you. Okay, so our next applicant is Andy Smith. Okay, I think we're ready, Ingrid. Okay, is that enough time to read through this statement? Okay, we're ready to move on. Thanks. Okay, maybe third applicant. E M Easterly, kind of reminds me of E E Cummings, the initials. Okay. So I should have perhaps put together a slide with the names of the three candidates. Um, let me scroll back up. We have E M. Easterly, is that right? And then Andy Smith. Uh huh. And there are, is Jimmy Jones. So I would open the floor to folks that are, that have any kind of comments or evaluations of the different applicants that we are considering at this point based on their statements of interest.
I can go. Um, and then I see Fran maybe has her hand up too. I thought the first candidate, Jimmy Johns, was a strong application. And, um, I thought because they mentioned they're formerly homeless, that might be an interesting perspective to have on the committee. And they also seem to be involved in an organization that engages with a lot of diverse communities. So, um, that might be uh, good to have that representation. Um, the second candidate, Andy Smith, I thought, um, uh, was also an interesting application, regional property manager, which is kind of an interesting perspective. But in reading the, the application again, I just didn't really get a, a, a strong sense that this person does a lot of community engagement with like everyday community members. Um, and since we are a committee focused on community involvement, um, you know, I'm not sure if it's the greatest fit. It seems like this person might be a better fit for like a housing advisor committee or something like that. Um, and then the third candidate, um, you know, they did identify as, as a, a community member. And, but I just didn't get a lot. I didn't get as much information as I wanted from them. Um, but that's my, my general assessment.
Thank you. Mike, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I don't know. Did Fran have hers up before mine?
Fran, if you did, go ahead. Um, you're on mute. Fran's always in someplace like Hawaii. I bet she is right now.
Well, but but I'm, I may be virtually, wait a minute, my physical body.
I, I don't know what time it is there, but thank you for being here this morning.
And I make legislation happen here, which is great.
Um, go ahead. Did you have thoughts to share with the group?
Did you mean me or Michael?
Um, you or Michael. I don't know who had their hand up.
Okay, let me go ahead and so we don't waste everybody's time. Um, so I had two, two similar thoughts. One is that, um, I, I understand having been homeless myself, so I recognize that that's key there. I think that Jimmy Jones actually works with an organization who, um, community based organization, which is good because you, then there's that informational networking that I think is a really good idea. Um, that's more significant than the, than the homelessness itself. Um, that whole networking part, but the other part is that, um, for Andy, um, too often we, we look at the community individuals and we don't get the other side of the story. And it's kind of funny to hear that person say that, oh, we always talk to the community and not to the developers or whatever it is, because of course the community feels like there's always these closed door conversations between land use and the developers and the community doesn't get to here. So, um, I would be very much interested to get the developers and the business engaged. Because in order for us to be able to have a real balance in our work, we need to have small businesses, large businesses, we need to have all of those people engaged in, um, decision making. So for me, that's a real plus. I don't know if, um, that gender makes a difference in our decision because our committee right now has, it seems to be a little bit heavy on one gender versus another. But, um, that may have a picture, another part here because if we're talking about gender representation from the state, then that, that could make a difference in these two candidates. Um, the other part, third, last part is Andy didn't fill in an awful lot of questions. Question two, they were blank rather than having any yes or anything. So, um, maybe concerned that she doesn't, that person doesn't do any of those other things as well. So that would tend to make me lean more towards the first candidate. And the third candidate seemed pretty lightest.
Mm hmm.
So those are my observations. I don't know if that was too heavy, but yeah.
No, thank you. And just a reminder, um, we cannot use gender as part of our decision making. Anything that we factor in, that's one of the protected classes that was on the slide. So, um, while, while it is true that I think we have a majority of, uh, committee members who identify with, um, you know, identify as female, uh, we can't use that as part of our decision making criteria. Mike, go ahead.
So, uh, to start off with, I, I can't say I'm, I know him well, but I do know E M from back when I was on the budget committee with Chariots. So I don't know if that means I can't have a say. Um, but I do know some of the stuff he's done in the past. Uh, as to Andy and the comments about developers not having a say. I don't know. I guess I lean on the side of developers tend to be in the rooms more than the community members. And I, I, I really felt like Jimmy's was the most solid, uh, application for, for being on the committee.
Thank you. Zachariah, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi. Good morning, everybody. And sorry for being a bit late. Um, I was, I'll just share. I was on the, uh, the Teams meeting that the agenda, uh, had a link for and, and not the meeting invite for the Zoom. So, um, I was operating in a, in a different meeting there for a moment. Uh, anyway, I will echo what has been shared so far. I think, um, uh, Jimmy Jones' application is, is the strongest, uh, of, of the ones we received. I think they, they hit a lot of the, um, background and, and experiences that, that we're interested in or would, would, uh, really benefit our, our committee and the, um, the agency at, at large. And the, yeah, I'll, I'll also just add, I, I thought I, I took a bit of a, a issue with the, the developer saying that, that they, I mean, I appreciate that they want to be involved more, but I, I'll just say that I really feel like the C I A C is, is focused on community members and community organizations and, and not, not necessarily um, from the development perspective. It's almost, um, I don't know if I'd say the opposite, but it's really important to bring the community members. And usually I think most people have a feeling that development and land use is all about the developers and then the permitting organization, the, the cities or the counties. So that's kind of why I think we have this committee. Um, so anyway, I, I'm in favor of, uh, uh, of including or asking Jimmy Jones to join our committee.
Great. I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you. Leah, I think you were next.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, uh, for your reflections on this. It's helpful to hear everyone's feedback. Um, I will echo, I think, what a lot of folks have said. Um, I am excited about the idea of having, uh, community based organizations as a part of this group who do work with some of the like historically underserved, um, or difficult to reach groups that we, I think from like a practitioner perspective, really look to engage as a part of our planning efforts. Um, and working with those community based organizations is, um, a really important tactic to do public involvement. Um, so having a community action agency participate, I think, is, is really valuable. Um, a valuable voice to have at the table. So I think I'll just echo what others have said. Um, and thinking that Jimmy is a, a strong candidate.
All right. And Chantal, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, I will somewhat echo what everyone is saying. I do see, um, Jimmy as a, as the strongest applicant. Um, but I guess also I'm, I'm still kind of curious to see what Andy would have to offer just because, um, and at least in the, in the region that I'm in. I mean, the developers here are also the community members. Um, I mean, obviously, but it, it's a bit more, the lines are a bit more blurred. And so for me, sometimes hearing those voices and seeing how, um, public, private and nonprofit partnerships can, can really, um, work together a bit more and listening to from everyone's perspective. So I, I, I understand, um, where others in this, in this group is coming from, um, where developers have more of a say. But sometimes that's not a bad thing, just to be realistic about what all can be um, involved in the decision making process or, um, what other thoughts could be included um, when trying to move forward. Um, um, decision making and policymaking, but, um, but I, I still see, I mean, on paper, Jimmy still looks um, stronger, um, as to what he could bring, uh, to the table. Okay.
Thank you.
Has everybody who wanted to share their thoughts said something? Or Jennifer, I don't want to lean on you, but if you have thoughts, um, to share, we're always happy to hear from you.
Um, I would just, um, agree with what has already been said at, as Jimmy Jones being the strongest candidate for this committee.
All right. Okay, um, so I will take back the screen here in a second. Um, let me figure out how to do this. Boy, I, two weeks of vacation, I could not figure out how to share my screen or join a meeting until about Wednesday. So it's a good thing we had this meeting on Friday. Right. Thank you. Well, welcome back, everyone. Um, I'm going to share my screen again. Uh, I do have one final slide that hopefully is helpful to this group. I struggled a bit with the language for this motion. Um, so if it looks awkward, I apologize. It's not wanting me to share my screen. Okay, here we go. Everybody see that? Great. Um, so I I open it to the committee, uh, for any kind of final comments or if someone would like to propose a motion. I if we need to type the names of the candidates in the chat, uh, for folks, we can. But Fran, I see you have your hand up. So go ahead.
Um, oops. Yeah, I moved it. This citizen involvement advisory committee recommend Jimmy Jones to the Land Conservation Development Commission for appointment to the Citizen Involvement Advisory Committee at their January twenty twenty third meeting.
All right, we have a motion. Jennifer, you have your hand up.
Um, I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, uh, on our motion before we take a vote of committee members? Okay, seeing none. Um, all those in favor of the proposed motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. And if there are any opposed, uh, could you please signify by saying nay? All right, Ingrid, let's let the record show that this motion has passed unanimously. And we will make the recommendation to LCDC to appoint Jimmy Jones to our C I A C at the January meeting. And I will reach out, um, to our applicant and I will let him know so that if he is, or let them know, uh, so that if they are interested in attending the meeting in person, they can, and I hope that they will. And I will, uh, put this information into the staff report that will appear in the commission materials that are published next week, I think. Um, so you will all see that. And I think you will be getting a few emails, uh, from Ingrid regarding logistics around our upcoming LCDC meeting when we have our joint meeting and our new C I A C member appointment. Um, so please be on the lookout for them. But otherwise, I think we have taken care of everything we need to take care of this morning. So unless folks just want to hang out with me, which I would completely understand, um, I will let you go about your morning. Leah, you're ready to say something?
Yeah, quickly. So I think you've inferred this, Sadie, but just as a reminder to folks that our next meeting is a joint meeting with LCDC with the commission at the end of January, uh, with an in-person option. So I think folks have probably already gotten an email or two about that. But just reminding folks that maybe opening it up, since we have a couple of minutes to see that people have any questions about logistics or dates, um, while we're all together here.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So Ingrid, um,
Chantal, go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Chantal, please.
So could you remind me what we're, uh, could it be discussing and?
So, yeah, no, thank you for that. Um, and great question. So we, it, our annual joint meeting with the Land Conservation Development Commission fell a bit by the wayside, um, during COVID times. Um, and so we are back on track now and hopefully we'll be having a joint meeting with, uh, our commission members once a year. And really it is, it's an opportunity, one, for the C I A C to present. Oh, wait, why am I still sharing? Sorry. Um, to present the work that we have accomplished in the past year to the commission and to get the commission's input and feedback on developing a work plan for the year ahead and potentially a little bit longer term, like a biennium or some long-term goals. Um, the discussion questions that we have or that I have put in the staff report based on our conversations here, um, are really, how can the C I A C best support the commission in doing our work around community engagement? Um, and, and sort of having that discussion about, um, like priorities and goals lead to the development of a work plan for us over the coming year. So it's really, it's intended to be kind of a public brainstorming session. Um, and really a conversation with our commissioners. Um, and if you're able to attend in person, which you're pretty far away, so I would understand if you can. Um, but we will reimburse for travel and accommodation, um, with the state per diem. Um, and it really, our commission is some of the, number one, some of the hardest working volunteers in state government, I assure you. Um, but number two, they are just, they're a really fantastic group of people. Um, and so I think it'll be a great conversation and I'm really looking forward to it. So, um, I hopefully that answers the question. And I see a hand up, but I, oh, that's mine. Sorry, that's my mouse. It's not a hand. All right. I see a thumbs up from Chantal. Thank you. Um, and Ingrid will be, um, reaching out to this group to get your mailing address so that she can mail for those that have indicated they're wanting to attend. so that she can mail for those that have indicated they're wanting to attend in person. We have parking passes that will cover your parking for the day so that you don't have to pay for it. So we'll put those in the mail and they'll arrive physically. So if you're like me, and sometimes that piles up, be on the lookout for that little state of Oregon envelope coming in if you're going to attend in person. But we will need your physical mailing address to, to get those to you. We could also, you know, figure out something day of where you would come in and collect it if that's what would work for you. But our general practice is to get them to people ahead of time so that you don't have to mess around with that when you get here. Any other questions? So I'll just fill in after we have our public-facing conversation that's part of the, the meeting that is agended with the commission. All of our C I A C members that are in attendance are invited to join commissioners for lunch, which the department will provide, will send you something to fill out so that you can select what it is you want. Unless I, maybe we're doing something different this time, Ingrid, I'm not sure. But lunch is provided. And, and that's a less formal, you know, that's just kind of social, get to know the commissioners, get to know one another. We don't really, because it's not on the agenda, we can't really talk shop that much. It's a bunch of planners, so sometimes it's hard to avoid. But it's really intended to be more of a, a social opportunity for, for everyone. Okay, thank you for bringing that up, Leah.
Well, well, thank you all for your time today and for your thoughtful discussion. And we're excited to welcome Jimmy and it'd be great to meet him at the end of the month if he's available. But if not, you know, we'll see him at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him by email and I'll CC you and Jennifer on the email. All right, super. All right, thank you, everyone. I believe we are adjourned. Have a fantastic Friday and a great weekend.
Have a great weekend, everyone.
I have some question to ask you. We could do it outside of this. I think that'd probably be better. So I don't know if you want me to just give you a phone call. It's, it's related to the LCD, but it's just a question. So.
You have my work number. Let me put it in the chat really fast. You can grab it.